Thank you. Welcome to the March 23rd, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Will everyone please stand for the pledge? Mr. Garamendi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be a staff announcement. We have Mr. Rick DiBasilio here with our neighboring county sheriff. Rick, can you do introductions?
Absolutely. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. I wanted to bring to your attention and the folks' attention through Sheriff Bill Pooley from Tooluma County, we had one of our deputies that assisted one of his deputies out on the Parrot's Ferry Bridge here a few weeks back. So I will let Sheriff Pooley explain what happened. Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Chair.
Chairman, thank you for having me here today. A great day, very happy to be here. In the early morning hours of February 28th, law enforcement was called to the Parrot's Ferry Bridge. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
This is a little awkward. And for a gentleman that was planning a suicide attempt by jumping off the bridge. Law enforcement searched the area. We called out search and rescue. Both sheriff's office, boat patrol teams went to the area. And we actually located, our deputy corporal Long located the individual, started an interaction with him. The individual then very suddenly jumped off the bridge. Deputy Long was able to grasp the gentleman's arm and hold on to him until Deputy Jason Markovic showed up and assisted. They were able to hold on to this gentleman, as you can see from the picture, which really just says, the picture's worth a thousand words, really. They were able to hold on to him until the search and rescue teams were able to get a rope around the gentleman and pull him back up. And for those great actions, I would like to present Jason with the Tooluma County Sheriff's Office Life Saving Award. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Pooley.
Thank you for what you do. I'm so proud of you. You're fantastic. Thank you. It's, we got more press from this, as you can imagine, than you could believe. And one of the large network anchors in New York said, "This is the picture movies are made out of." So who do you want to play your role? Are we talking Tom Cruise? I mean, who are we talking to? Somebody call the law. Really, thank you so much, Jason. Cancelled. Sheriff, can we, we have his certificate right there. Oh, yes. We have a certificate from our county. Our Board of Supervisors also recognized him and presented him with this. So this is just a thing from the Board of Supervisors, and thank you so much, and honoring your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know. I was just doing my job, just doing my job. I heard that we were looking for someone, and Tooluma was looking for someone. And in law enforcement, there are just so many aspects. One minute you could be arresting someone, and then the next minute you can be saving one. So it's phenomenal career, and I was just happy that I could be a part of it and help in saving this man's life.
We thank you for your representation, and we thank Sheriff Pooley for coming across the line and being a great partner with Calaveras County. You know, it's, it's being able to make that snap decision in what you did, that, you know, that states that you're in the right place in the right career. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to reiterate, a lot of people, as you know, the police departments, the sheriff's offices and past here have taken a lot of bad rap. We're always doing things wrong. Well, this shows that the men and women of law enforcement as a whole do the right thing as much as they possibly can. So I, my hat and goes off to the folks in our department, the folks in Tooluma County's department for being able to work together. This was obviously a joint effort. We worked very well together, and we have for many years, and we will continue to do so. But law enforcement as a whole is out there to help people, and this is just the prime example of how we're here to help. So thank you for your time, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're glad you're here to help.
You bet.
Yes, yes, Ms., Ms. Callaway, your light, your microphone, sorry.
How is the, I don't know what you call them, the man doing?
Obviously, we, obviously, we took him to get help. And to be quite honest, I'm not sure how he's doing. I haven't followed back up, but I haven't heard anything negative. So I believe he's doing well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
On me. Are there any further staff announcements, Ms. Simpson?
Lisa, did you have any other announcements?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairstopper, respective Board members, and Deputy Clerk of the Board, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today, I would like to highlight our animal service volunteers who day in and day out provide kindness, love, and work hard for those in our care. Each month, over the past two months, our volunteers have donated over 200 hours of their time. Some of the volunteer duties include behavior evaluation, dog walking, enrichment such as play, bathing, providing treats, attention specific to maybe an animal's individual needs, volunteer scheduling, and they also provide flyers for our animals when we advertise them through our social media and also through our special events. For our cat volunteers, they perform the basic tasks including cleaning and moving cats, enrichment such as play, as I mentioned before, they monitor behavior, provide treats, and pay attention to the animal's specific needs. They also do volunteer scheduling. We also have volunteers that volunteer to manage other volunteers. They provide shelter stats and calculations, disseminate information on special cases to other volunteers, and they also create go-home bags for adoptions and follow up on the animals that have been adopted. They also provide transportation when requested. So today, I would like to thank our volunteers. Our animal services department would like to acknowledge the following people for their dedication to our animals and our community, and those people include the following: Bob and Bobby Pyle, Bruce Wainingham, Kathy Missley, Ed and Dolores Ransom, Kel Guyer, Iris Stepanovich, Janet Beckler, Jasmine Roots, Judith Porter, Kim Doherty, Leslie Latour, Mona Galley, Mary Ann Roche, Nona Fries, Patty Payne, Sarah Corley Signorello, Sharon Skipworth, and last but not least, Uta and Jerry Peters. So our heartfelt thanks goes out to this wonderful group of people. Our animal service department would not be a success without them. Thank you very much, volunteers. You're very much appreciated. Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Are there any other further staff announcements, Ms. Simpson?
None at this time.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the public health update. Public Health Services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel Good morning, Mr. Leach.
Good morning, members of the board and residents of Calaveras County. It's my honor to be here again for another board meeting as interim HHS Director. Getting into the data for this week, here's the report out. Tests completed, 35,881 since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. Positive tests, we've had 1,972 Calaveras County residents test positive for COVID. We currently have 10 active cases. We have had 1,911 recovered. Can I check, am I getting feedback, or is the audio clear?
It's clear here.
Okay. It's kind of back a little bit on this end, but I'll just keep going. Right as of this morning, we have zero active hospitalizations. We have had 51 fatalities to date, so there was one more person who passed away. That person was a female in the age 50 to 64 age bracket, and that was reported to our data yesterday. Vaccine doses administered to Calaveras County residents, as of this morning, we have had 17,638 doses administered. So that's great. That's an increase of 3,000 over what I reported last Tuesday. So 3,000 a week is a really good pace. I think that's, that's a little higher than we normally run, but we did have two larger clinics at Frog Town last week, and that has helped move things along. I think our normal pace is closer to 2,000 per week. Vaccine doses delivered, last week, we got another pretty large shipment. I believe we got 3,610 vaccine doses. So we're pretty well stocked up on supply right now, and just a matter of getting doses into arms and taking the next couple of months to keep working past this. Same tiers being vaccinated. We did, you know, move into people 16 and older with serious medical conditions fairly recently, so I want to make sure that word keeps getting out and that those people know that they're eligible and can go into My Turn and register. A few important notes for this week. We are running our usual clinics at Frog Town. Our normal days are Tuesday and Thursday there. Unfortunately, some of you may have noticed that we had some technical issues. The My Turn registration portion for Calaveras County went down over the weekend and really put a damper on what we were able to do today. So really, for today, we're just doing some return second doses and setting back up because Frog Town, we, they had a gun show there this weekend, and we had to tear down our setup and then reset it back up this morning. So that's okay. We're doing some smaller clinics throughout the week that are closed, odd stuff that we're not advertising. But we also have a full registration open for this Thursday. So if people are wondering, you know, where can I get vaccinated this week? Please, go sign up for Thursday's clinic at Frog Town. We still have plenty of slots available for that one. Last week, we administered about 1,000 doses there at Frog Town clinics. So we were set up where we had the capacity to be able to do about 1,400. We got about 1,000 people actually show up. So a couple of things I want to say on that. One is, you know, if you're scheduling an appointment, but please show up. You know, it's really difficult. We're, you know, there's a lot of people waiting for vaccines, and frankly, you know, it makes it really tough if you take somebody's slot and then you don't show up for a vaccine clinic. So I would hope that our residents, you know, if you're scheduling an appointment, we want you to show up or cancel your, your appointment, okay? Let's see, what else? Next week, we are planning to open a clinic at the Vets Hall in Valley Springs for Wednesday the 31st from 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock. That'll be our first trial run there. So it will be a smaller registration number for that. Obviously, it doesn't have the capacity of Frog Town, but we do want to, you know, do some outreach to Valley Springs. So it'll be 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock on the 31st. It's important to note that that is not in My Turn yet. With the technical issues that we had with My Turn, we've been waiting to get that site back up and running. We're still having a few glitches, but we have this week resolved. Everything's working fine for this Thursday's clinic, so go register for that. We hope within the next couple of days that we will have everything set up in My Turn for next week's clinics, including Frog Town, including the Vets Hall, Valley Springs clinic on the 31st from 1 to 4. Testing. We don't want to lose sight of testing and the importance of that. In order to slow the spread, we need to make sure that our residents are getting tested, even if they're asymptomatic. So there is free COVID testing today at Ironstone from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Once again, at Ironstone today from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And then we also have free COVID testing at the Armory in Copperopolis this Friday, March 26th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. Once again, that's testing at the Armory in Copperopolis this Friday from 9:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. So although we've seen the spread slow down a little bit, you know, there's still plenty, plenty of cases popping up. In fact, we've seen a slight uptick over the last week. Not enough to be panicked, but enough to remind ourselves to pay attention. Please, do the things that we've been advertising. Wear a mask, avoid large gatherings, maintain social distance, wash your hands, and if you're sick, stay home. And that's a really important, if you're sick, stay home. You know, that's how we, we slow or stop the spread. And that really ties into us being in the red tier. As you guys know, we recently moved from the purple, which is the most restrictive tier, to the red tier in the blueprint for a safer economy framework. Right now, it looks like we will probably remain in the red tier for the foreseeable future. Our data, you know, in taking a deeper look at it, we have been trying to push more toward the orange tier, but unfortunately, with even the slightest uptick, we're, we're kind of sitting back in that red tier, it looks like, for this week. It's hard to know until a week in its entirety has passed, and we've looked at, you know, verification of cases and the things that we need to do to, to take a closer look at the data. But, you know, to oversimplify it, I believe we're going to be in the red tier for a while. That said, we could have a spike, you know, we could get complacent and have a spike and be right back in the purple tier. So let's not do that. As we're entering spring, I know there's a lot of parents that want to see their kids play sports. I know there's schools that want to be open. There's businesses that want to remain open. There's, you know, planned events that, that can be done outdoors, that can be done safely. But none of that can happen if we get complacent and start sliding backward, and we end up in, with, once again, a very widespread COVID surge. So we want to avoid that at all costs and do this responsibly. Outdoor gatherings, I've been asked a lot of questions on that. I wish I could provide the public a little bit more clarity on that, but, but here's what I'm going to say is, I know that CDPH is working on some revisions to the framework with specific regard to what can be done outdoors. So what's really best, because there's no way I can get into every, you know, specific type of event that happens outdoors. What's really best, if you're a business owner, or you're just a citizen who's wondering, you know, what's open, what can happen, what can't happen, that's all in the blueprint for a safer economy framework. And so at any given time, you can go in, enter Calaveras County and look at what our current restrictions are and what we're current, what we're currently allowed to do. So I encourage people, please, just go to the blueprint for a safer economy page and see what we're at. Some of the complexities, just so you all understand, is, for example, right now, we're in the red tier. If we were to move back into a more restrictive tier of purple, that would be a much more restrictive set of regulations. If we start having even further reduction in cases and we eventually move into the orange tier, then obviously, things would open up a little bit more and be less restrictive. And then also, there are revisions that are going into place on April 1st that some of the specifics haven't been released yet. So it's really better, I know that people want to plan ahead. The framework doesn't make it real easy to do that, so you really need to kind of stay up on it and keep checking if you're planning for any kind of, you know, small gatherings and outdoor types of events. I think that's the best I can do with that. For now, I just encourage people, keep wearing your mask, keep being safe, do the things you know that you need to do, and we're going to get there. You know, we were talking in, in January, and things looked pretty grim. Now things are, are moving forward pretty well. We're vaccinating 2,000 to 3,000 people every week as a community, and, you know, we've moved into a less restrictive tier. At least restaurants are open with 25% capacity. People are having small family gatherings again. Vaccinated people are getting together. You know, it's great. We're moving in the right direction. We want to keep doing that. So I'll get off my soapbox with that and hopefully pass it over to my partner in crime, Doug Archer over there at Mark Twain. Doug, what do you have for us today?
Thanks, Sam. I actually don't have too much to add to that. So we're still in the process of setting up with My Turn. And as Sam mentioned, there've been a couple of technical glitches there. So our clinics are still working through those details. We still have our second dose clinics happening this week, next week, and into the first week of April. And then our plan remains the same. After that final round of second doses, we are going to ship our vaccine operation through Saturdays. Our tentative go-live for that is April 10th, second Saturday in April. And our plan would be to provide 800 or up to 800, as long as we can fill the slots, up to 800 doses each Saturday moving forward. Again, we're, through Dignity Health, we're, we're not receiving any supply from Dignity Health. Well, better yet, Dignity Health is receiving very, very minimal supply for the whole system. Last week, they received a little under 5,000 doses for all of the California hospitals. So that's primarily reserved for inpatient use. So yet again, here I am, kind of rejoicing in the partnership that we've built to allow us to continue being in the game here. And we're looking forward to not only being established on My Turn, but also being able to launch the Saturday clinics. So I think, I think it'd be really good for our community to have the options of, you know, Frog Town during the week and a Saturday clinic for, you know, the commuters and the workers that aren't here during the weekdays. So in terms of hospital, Sam already mentioned, but we have zero COVID patients in our hospital right now. And we're essentially back to business as usual, with the exception of, you know, still a few restrictions in terms of masking, visitor policy, things like that. But we're back to doing all of our elective procedures, and our clinics are, you know, it seems like, seems like patients are feeling a little more comfortable in scheduling and coming into their normal primary care type stuff, which is really good. So I think we're, we're making that effort to get back to whatever normal is. That's all I had.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Archer. Any questions from the board members? Ms. Callaway?
Mr. Lynch, are we going to lower the age limit for the senior population from 65-plus to whatever, 55-plus? And since we seem to be having room to accept more, and if so, is Mark Twain then going to be giving the vaccine to that population?
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, once again, blame the state for something else. Sorry, Supervisor Callaway, they deserve it on this one. So you know, you're all aware that we were required to get on My Turn and that we were assigned waves. There were, there were three specific phases, I should say, of when people were required to get on My Turn. For us, that date was March 7th. I believe that you're probably hearing from folks who've heard that Tooluma has lowered the age, which, which is good. I would have frankly already have lowered the age myself to make sure that we continue to, to have the supply and the demand well synchronized. Right now, I will admit that they're not, and frankly, it's because My Turn is a statewide system, and we are unable to lower the age just for Calaveras County. So what we are doing is, is making sure that we're, and we are not alone in this. Let me, let me be very, very clear. Counties statewide have been pre-vocal that they're not seeing the turnout over the last two weeks that they were getting prior to that. So the counties like ourselves that have worked ahead and started to see some saturation in the tier and see demand start to diminish in the currently eligible populations, we have been advocating to open things up more. And I think we really are getting to the point where if I were able to unilaterally make a decision here, I absolutely would lower the age. We do not have the technical ability to do that in My Turn, so my assumption is that that should happen some point very, very soon, but I don't have a date to tell the public yet. I think it's pretty safe to say that we will see some kind of change between now and the next time that I'm able to present to the board, because we have a few weeks in between. So I believe March 13th, correct me if I'm wrong, is the next board meeting where I'd be providing a public health update. And I would think that sometime between now and then, the age will probably get lowered because it needs to, and I wish they'd lower it now. So appreciate the question, agree wholeheartedly. I have zero control. This isn't something where I can advocate to do things differently here. The counties that weren't required to get on My Turn in the, in the first two phases, frankly, had a little bit of a strategic advantage there in being able to move a little further through the tiers. So we'll, we'll catch up when we can. But that said, there's still a lot of doses going into arms. I mean, I'm really happy with our progress. And some of that, you know, to the state's credit, what they want is, they, they want to make sure that we're really doing outreach effort and making sure that we hit everybody in the targeted groups before we start just flooding it with demand again to folks that may be less vulnerable than the folks who were originally placed in the earlier phases. So try to, try to paint both sides and be somewhat objective about it. In the end, yeah, I want to lower the age too.
She just turned, she just turned it back on. Anything further, Ms. Callaway?
Yes. Mr. Archer, the rumor on the street is that Mark Twain is going to stop giving shots, but that's not what I heard you say, that you're trying to get on to My Turn and that you would segue into other categories in the continued partnership with public health. Is that true?
Yeah, that's absolutely true. I don't know where the rumors continue to come from, but not only are we going to start our Saturday clinics on April 10th, but we're continuing to give somewhere around 400 to 600 second doses a week and fill that. Yeah, we, we have no plans nor desire to stop giving vaccine.
That's good news, Mr. Archer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Callaway? Any other board members have any questions?
I have one.
Ms. Fulendorf.
This is for Sam. I was hoping you could update on MOU with Blue Shield. What's the status of that?
I haven't signed it yet. There were, there were some visions that I'm, I'm pretty happy with. Sarah, I see your ear face popping up on the screen, so you're, you're welcome to chime in here if you want to. I hesitate to speak on it because I really haven't spent much time with it. It came in last night. So I've got to take some time and actually read through the bullet point highlights, but it does sound like it opens things up slightly more to where we will be able to work with our partners a little bit better. So I haven't even had a chance to discuss that with Doug or any other medical providers that might be coming on board. But I am happy with where that stands, and I believe we do plan to move forward with it. Just a matter of when I'm going to put my signature on that and when it'll be brought back for ratification. Sarah, you want to?
No, I, I echo everything Sam said. And just to clarify, it's, it's not an MOU with Blue Shield. That was the original. That was the original, the state originally was going to mandate that counties enter into agreements with Blue Shield as the third-party administrator. They got a lot of pushback from counties on that. And there's been a lot of work done statewide through CSAC with a working group of my colleagues statewide. And so it is now an MOU. It'll be an agreement between us and the state directly as opposed to between us and Blue Shield. And they have made some changes, which Sam just alluded to, which I think all the counties believe are positive changes. And I think we do anticipate entering into that very soon.
Yeah, Colleen and I were on a CDPH call last night about this from 7 till, I don't know, 8:30 or so. You know, we're pretty happy with most of the changes. It is a little more time-intensive on our end because of the way that we have to provide data, but that's kind of getting into the weeds. Our allocation requests and stuff are a little bit more complex. But I still think, of course, I'm not the one who has to do it, but you know, for our staff, it's a little more time-consuming, but it definitely gives us what we wanted in being able to share a little bit more with some of our partners, especially over the next month or so where I think it's really, really critical to make sure that while our MCEs like Mark Twain and other providers are fighting to get their own allocations restored, that while we have a large supply, we should be able to filter to other providers. So we're happy with where that MOU stands. I think Blue Shield in the end was directed by the state to make some changes. And you know, we're relatively happy with where it stands and I plan to move forward with it. And thank you, Sarah, to you and county councils statewide, as well as frankly, CSAC, who I know applied a lot of pressure on this as well. And during the height, I think they hurt, sometimes they have to hear things from a lot of different sources. And I think that that pressure finally got the word of what we'd been telling them all along, which is, yeah, we've got good partnerships going. You know, sometimes you just gotta not totally try to make problems where they don't exist.
Anything further, Ms. Fuldorff? Thank you, Sam. Any other board members have any questions? Not at this time? I just want to say thank you. Seventeen thousand 638 doses administered. I mean, if that's two for every person, that means you've hit 8,819 people if they've gotten both doses. So you know, that's 20% of the population. So that's a hurdle. And as the numbers are coming in, I mean, earlier this year, we're talking back and forth about how many doses can you administer? And you're stepping up and getting them done, Mr. Leach. And along with our partners over at Mark Twain from Dignity Health. Thank you, Mr. Archer. We really appreciate everything you're doing over there. You know, even with some of the setbacks by the state, you know, as, you know, MyTurn going down over the weekend, you know, that kind of set us back for having our schedule today at Frog Town, which is unfortunate. But you know, you're working with the state to iron out those glitches and we'll move forward in a better direction. One thing I want to thank Ms. Callaway for bringing up, the, you know, when are we moving down in age or what's the next tier of people coming forward? Until that's presented by the state, we don't really know for sure. But general word across the nation is we'll all be working towards opening that up, you know, sooner than later. But until it happens, you know, that's a point we can only wait for. I just want to thank you all for the great work personally and keep it up because we still have 80% more to go. Ms. Simpson, any public comment on this item?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. Any further board comment? Or Mr. Leach or Mr. Archer, anything further?
Thanks for this board and we'll get to work on that 80%.
Thank you, sir. And you both have a good day and look forward to seeing you both again soon. We'll move on to recognition and acknowledgements. Item two, First Five Adopt a Proclamation Declaring April 2021 as Be the One Month in Calaveras County. Mr. Gueramendi?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and fellow board members. As you know, I have served on First Five Commission for the last four and a half years, and this is really an amazing program. And normally this time of year, we'd be having an event out in the Master Gardeners area. And it is, if you, once we get that going again, I encourage everybody to attend it because it will move you and it will show you how one person can make a difference in people's lives. So this is to adopt a proclamation declaring April 2021 as Be the One Month in Calaveras County. So whereas based on resilience research, that Be the One campaign can help build a more resilient community where all can thrive. And whereas all members of the community have a role to play in strengthening families to ensure children grow up safe, protected, and loved. And whereas Calaveras County agencies, schools, and organizations are working to bring attention to the long-term impacts of toxic stress and to implement trauma-informed strategies to support families. And whereas families are strengthened through supportive personal relationships, resiliency tools, knowledge of child development, and concrete supports such as income, shelter, food, and childcare. And with, whereas without these supports, well-intentioned parents can make poor decisions and that can lead to neglect or abuse, including physical, sexual, and emotional abuse. And whereas child abuse is preventable when children and adults have at least one caring, supportive adult in their lives who believes in their potential. And whereas for children facing a crisis of experiencing toxic stress, having one caring adult to be the one can give them a boost that will help them thrive. Whereas caring relationships have the power to build resilience, inspire, comfort, and transform us, we have the power to be the one today. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. Is there any representatives from First Five?
Yes, Robin Davis.
Excellent, Robin Davis, hello.
Yes, good morning. I'm Robin Davis, Program Coordinator with First Five Calaveras. We're a private health and human services agency. And I'm here on behalf of the Advisory Council Prevent Child Abuse Calaveras and our partners. We have a diverse representation of council members that represent parents, early childhood development, foster youth services, behavioral health, child welfare, victim advocacy, and school-based prevention. And Prevent Child Abuse Calaveras raises funds each year through an insert in the county property tax bills. And we are so grateful to over 300 donors a year to the Children's Trust Fund that supports our work to create strategies to improve the well-being of all families in Calaveras County. So today with our community partners, you know, we'd like to proclaim April as Be the One Month. We will be sharing how to be the one in our homes, schools, and community. And there's a great need for adults to volunteer for a child. So we're asking people to connect with local organizations, to share information through our partners and Facebook. We'll have an outreach campaign, community pinwheel display, activity kits, and a virtual Light of Hope ceremony that Supervisor Gueramendi was talking about on April 21st that honors local individuals who have helped a child succeed. So we know that we build community resilience one person at a time and we hope that you can join us. And I'd also like to give a big appreciation to all of our social workers who work so hard with families affected by trauma and who are dedicated to helping the healing process so children and parents can thrive. I know we're going to honor them this month, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any further comments or public comment?
No further public comments.
Mr. Gueramendi, is there a motion you'd like to make?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation declaring April 2021 as Be the One Month in Calaveras County, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gueramendi. Is there a second? I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board, Mr. Gueramendi.
Thank you. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, does hereby designate the month of April 2021 to be declared Be the One Month in Calaveras County. Thank you. And Mr. Chair, I would like to add my comments to Ms. Davis and thank our social workers and people like Robin who do this hard work every day. Their dedication to our youth and our future is spectacular and they're very brave and strong people and I admire them tremendously. So thank.
Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. There's a very large group of people working with Ms. Davis and it's just, you know, with a lot of deep roots in Calaveras County. So we appreciate all the work they do and, you know, from the start of them coming in and helping out to what the finished product is of these children growing up and their future. Any further board comments? Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Gueramendi, is there any final? Oh, Ms. Callaway, your light's on, I apologize.
Just getting ready.
Okay. With that, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Davis, and thank you, First Five. We really do appreciate the work you do with our children.
Thank you, members of the board.
With that, Ms. Callaway, you can turn your light back on now. Number three, Human Services, Adopt a Proclamation Declaring March 2021 as Social Worker Appreciation Month. Ms. Callaway, thank you.
Well, Ms. Davis and Supervisor Gueramendi did a great sanguine into this. And this proclamation is retroactive to the 1st of March, since it is for March 2021 as Social Worker Appreciation Month. Whereas the social work profession for decades has been dedicated to improving human well-being, enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. And whereas this year's social worker theme, "Social Workers Are Essential," embodies the heroic contribution of the social work profession to our community, including the work the social workers have done to heal our nation during these times of pandemic and economic uncertainty. Whereas social workers have always been present in times of crisis, helping people overcome barriers during their most vulnerable times, such as fires in our community, snowstorms, extreme temperatures, and other natural disasters. And whereas social workers have helped this community by overcoming barriers, nurturing change, and improving lines and lives. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Calaveras County's social workers have been on the front lines with doctors, nurses, grocery store staff, and other essential employees, ensuring the public and children and our elders are safe, empowered to care for themselves. Whereas social workers will continue to stand ready to assist Calaveras citizens in overcoming present and future challenges, supporting families, and with connecting to mental health treatment, educational resources, community programs, and services to promote self-sufficiency. And I would like you to ask for staff or public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Callaway. You know, staff comment, is there the representative?
Ms. Laura Larson?
Ms. Laura Larson, welcome.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors of Calaveras Citizens. I just want to thank you for allowing an opportunity this morning to acknowledge the wonderful work of our social workers. I know we have a packed agenda, but this is really important. The proclamation that was just shared, it just highlights just a few aspects of social work that makes this profession unique, necessary, and essential to every community. And I really think over the past year during the pandemic, the efforts of every social worker in my agency, but also social workers throughout the community, hospital social workers, school social workers who work within the hospice section, social workers that work within our care homes, they didn't skip a beat during the pandemic. They had to adjust the work that they did, but they came into work and we continued supporting our citizens. And while we made our adjustments, making sure that our staff were safe and also making sure that the citizens were safe, that allowed us to continue our necessary work. So while it's the end of March, we have been celebrating social workers throughout the agency for an entire month. And I did want to just thank you all for giving us this opportunity to highlight them. And if you have a chance, the remainder of this month or any time that you come in contact with social workers, if you could just thank them for their efforts, because oftentimes we work quietly within the community and it's really easy to miss an opportunity to thank them for their work. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Is there any further staff comments?
None at this time.
So we'll move on to public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Callaway, is there a motion you'd like to make?
No, but, oh yeah, I'll make the motion. Sure, thanks. I would be very honored to make the motion declaring all of March retroactive to March 1 as Social Worker Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board, Ms. Callaway.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. And maybe one day you'll let us come in and walk around the floor.
I would love for you to visit us, very much.
Now therefore be it proclaimed in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Calaveras social workers, the Board of Supervisors does hereby designate all of March 2021 to be declared Social Worker Appreciation Month in the County of Calaveras. Thank you, Ms. Larson, and to the social worker staff.
Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to a general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Do you have Mr. Stoughton?
Mr. Stoughton?
Mr. Stoughton, can you hear us?
We do have him unmuted, correct?
Okay, I am unmuted. Okay, that's just wonderful. Okay, what was on? Good morning, Board of Supervisors. As you know, everybody pays attention to these things. Today is National Puppy Day, and I have a puppy, a little fella. And today he's over in the next room chomping on a barbecue rib because that's what he likes to do. Let me begin by saying, not related to Puppy Day, that I'd like to thank Code Compliance, Lisa Medina, Doug Oliver, Environmental Health, Josh Crabtree of the Calaveras County Sheriff Department, Rick DiBasilio under Sheriff, Jim Masado under Sheriff, Environmental Health, all, the entire staff of Code Compliance for the fantastic job they did on Johnny Trail so far, Johnny Trail, Smitty Lane. Over the past few weeks, they've been cleaning that up. They did find some hazmat problems, so it has taken a little longer than usual to do this cleanup. They still have 20 to 30 cars that need to be removed from that property. And the contractors expected to begin that work very expected to begin that work very soon. After this project costs in excess of $70,000. The CoCompliance, the building department is really going to need more money later on this year to continue with abatement such as this. This is three properties so far out of four in West Point. After this is finished, every so often, or very frequently, I should say, there'll be increased patrols by the Sheriff's Department and if anything is found on that property, cars, trailers, garbage, it'll be tagged and they'll remove it within 15 days. So, the people that own that property better be on notice that this will not be tolerated anymore by Calaveras County. I think I may have left out a few people in the thank yous, but generally they've done a fantastic job so far and I look forward to seeing that property just cleaned up and the menace of its cars taken away, abated. Thank you very much. How much time do I have left?
About 15 seconds, Mr. Stoughton.
Oh, well, I hope that the board enjoys today's meeting. I don't know what's really on the agenda, I'm sorry about paying attention as much as I should, but I have to get back to my day and my life. Take care.
Thank you, Ms. Stoughton, you have a good day. Any further public comment?
No further public comment at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Simpson. With that, we're going to take a 10-minute break and then we'll come back to the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. So, we'll be returning to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for a later discussion. Is there any items the board would like to pull? Any items the staff would like to pull?
Mr. Chair, Christopher Von Latta from Administration, I request to pull item number 10, ID 5935. Withdraw that item, we will bring it back at a later date, uncertain.
Thank you, Ms. Von Latta. Any further items pulled? Public?
No public or staff.
Thank you, very much. With item 10 being withdrawn to a later date, can I get a motion by the board on the rest of the items?
I will move to the side of Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a five oh vote of the board. Thank you. With this, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 23, Human Services, receive a presentation from Health Plan of San Joaquin regarding the Managed Medi-Cal Partnership of Calaveras County Health and Human Services Agency and authorize the Board Chair to sign a letter of intent for the local initiation of Health Plan. Ms. Von Latta?
Sam Leach.
Yeah, I assume, but it will be Sam Leach doing the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, thank you, Chair Stopper.
I'm going to turn it over to Laura Larson, who is our lead on this. She's the Deputy Director of Social Services. So, Laura, are we presenters from Health Plan of San Joaquin here and ready to present?
I don't see them. It's Michael and Lizette. I don't see them on the, except they're in.
Laura, what is Michael's last name?
What's Michael's last name?
Is it Schrader?
Oh, Schrader.
And I'm sorry, and whom else was supposed to be here?
Grandios, Lizette Grandios.
Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, we will be doing the presentation.
They are both moved over to panelists now.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
Before we get started, I would just like to share that I know that there's a lot of questions regarding the presentation that we're about to have, but I just want everyone to know that this is just a conversation about what if, what could the future look like if we were to make a switch? And we're not asking for any decisions to be made today, but I do know that the state is asking that the county submit a letter of intent and that this presentation will look at that letter as well as what this would entail. But if we don't submit the letter of intent, then the county cannot be part of the conversation of what our future could look like if we wanted to explore this option. I'll also share with you that the last time that California allowed counties to look at public options, private options, was 13 years ago. And the opportunity to do this again, we don't know when that might come. So, again, this presentation is about being able to move forward with exploration on whether or not this would be a good option for Calaveras County. So, we're not making any decisions whatsoever about switching or not switching. We just want the opportunity to be able to explore what this might look like. And so, with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues, Lizette and Mike.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gueramendi.
If I may, this is set up as an action item, not as an information item. And so, Ms. Larson, I'd be curious how this is just an exploratory when we're signing, authorizing, signing a letter of intent.
Intent, yes.
Does that have to happen today? I know I read the presentation online, but so maybe we need some clarity on that because I just saw that Eldorado pushed off for 30 days. So, before we get going, are we informational or action? That's my question.
So, thank you for that. When we submitted this item for the board, we had not submitted the extension, but now we have and that's been approved by the state, so we do not need to sign that letter today. We have 30 days to do that. So, apologies for the confusion there, but when we first submitted this, it was on an action item, but I think today that this really would be more of an informational option. Is that right, Chair?
Thank you.
Yeah, that is correct. You know, just dealing with timelines of when things need to be submitted to board, I apologize for the confusion. That said, it is a agenda in the way that it could be an action item, so if you guys did want to, if the board wanted to sign the letter today, there's nothing to preclude you from doing that. We have already submitted the extension letter. It is important for the board to understand that based on the timelines that we have, we would be coming back March, or I'm sorry, April 27th, board meeting. So, that's not much time for turnaround and we would need to have, if we end up moving forward at the April 27th meeting with signatures or a letter of intent, that at that time it's going to be important that people understand that we have to get the signatures very quickly and overnight them to the state to be in compliance with getting them in by the end of April. So, just a little bit more information to augment what Laura had already said. And with that, are there any other questions before we have our partners here get started?
I don't believe so, Mr. Leach, and thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Gueramendi.
Should I start?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, good morning, Chair Stopper and Supervisors. I'm Michael Schrader, CEO of the Health Plan of San Joaquin, and with me is Lizette Granados, Chief Operating Officer. And our presentation is divided into two parts. I will describe the option that the state is giving counties to change managed care models for the Medi-Cal program, and then Lizette will give an overview of the Health Plan of San Joaquin. And just before we start, just as background, in 2013, the state grouped together 18 counties, including Calaveras, into what is called the regional model of managed care for the Medi-Cal program. And two commercial plans today provide coverage for all Medi-Cal beneficiaries in those 18 counties that make up that regional model. And the two commercial plans today are Anthem and Symteen. But what's changing is, and really driving all of this timeline, is that in October, the California Department of Healthcare Services, DHCS, will issue an RFP for the commercial plans for the Medi-Cal programs for all the different counties across the state. And so, ahead of releasing that RFP, the state is giving counties the option to change models. And the state will need to know the managed care model that each county chooses prior to releasing the RFP in October so that the state knows how many commercial plans to procure for each county. So, that's sort of the background behind what is this window of opportunity and why is the timeline what it is? And so, if we can go to the slide deck. I'm not seeing the slide deck, I don't know if you are. Or that's, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, sir. We don't see the slide deck quite yet, but let's give us an opportunity to open that up. Ms. Simpson?
I don't have their slides.
Okay. Let's see.
If we either, you can screenshot on your end or we can have you forward it to Ms. Simpson and then we can do it from our end. But if you need a five-minute break to iron this out, please let us know.
Let's do that, that way we can forward it.
Okay, we'll be back in five minutes after we.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Mr. Schrader, we have your slides now, I think we're ready to go. So, we'll get Ms. Simpson to share them up on the screen and we can work through them as you proceed.
Terrific, and sorry for the disruption. So, if we go to the next slide? So, I'll go ahead then if that's okay, Chair?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. So, the state has opened the window for counties to specify if they intend to change models. And as Laura explained, it's not often that this opportunity comes along. The current contract for the two commercial plans for the 18 counties started in 2013 and will span to the end of 2023. So, likewise, it could be another 10 years. Although at this point, I would say that we don't know, the state has not yet specified what the new contract term will be for the RFP. But the opportunity at this point is for counties to switch from the regional model with those two commercial plans to what's called a two-plan model where you have one commercial plan and one public plan. And the Health Plan of San Joaquin would be that public plan. Today, we cover San Joaquin and Stanislaus Counties. And interested counties have until March 31 to submit letters of intent or until April 30 for those that request an extension. And of course, Calaveras did request the extension and the state approved it. And if we go, if you can go to the next slide, please? So, the expansion, because we get asked, why is the Health Plan of San Joaquin interested? And I would say the expansion would give the Health Plan a larger contiguous service area reaching from Stanislaus in the south up through San Joaquin, Calaveras, Alpine, to Eldorado in the north. The Health Plan's interest in serving a broader area is to give members improved access, choice, and convenience. And just as an example, today, some of our members in San Joaquin County access providers in Stanislaus County and vice versa, depending on where they live, where they work, what's most convenient, where the provider they want is sort of located. It also gives providers who may have locations in multiple counties administrative simplification and it would give our public nonprofit health plan a greater scalability with lower overhead. And that's important to us. Today, our overhead is a little bit more than 4%. That means 95 cents of every dollar goes to providers so that members have lots of choice and access to quality physicians, to quality facilities. So, if we go to the next slide? So, this is the timeline that the Health Plan of San Joaquin and the counties agreed to in order to meet the March 31 deadline for submission of the letters of intent. The top, the two dates at the top apply to the Health Plan of San Joaquin. We completed a template letter of intent for counties to use and we obtained formal approval from the HPSJ Governing Commission, from our Governing Commission for moving ahead with the letters of intent. The bottom three dates apply to the counties, including to obtain formal approvals from their Boards of Supervisors by today, to obtain signatures from their Board Chairs by the 26th, and to submit the letters of intent to the state by the March 31 deadline. And so, for counties that, and yet, since we agreed to this timeline, all three counties have requested extensions and the state has approved all of the extension request. So, that, so what we wanted to do at the Health Plan of San Joaquin is stick to our milestone dates, stick to our deliverables so that counties could have, could take advantage of the extra time. So, this is where Calaveras and the other counties get that extra month to allow for additional stakeholder input and to coordinate. If we go to the next slide? On this longer timeline, the last two bullets on the right show that in October 2021, DHCS will release the RFP for the commercial plans and that in January 2024, the two health plans, either two commercial plans, if you were to stay with the same model, or one commercial plan and one public plan, HPSJ, if you change models to the two-plan model. That's the date that it would become effective. So, two and a half years, more than two and a half years from now. I would just say between those two dates, there would also be a state review process ahead of that go-live in January 2024. Today, in San Joaquin and Stanislaus Counties, we have contracts with all the hospitals, all of the clinics, including Tenet, Sutter, Adventist, Dignity, Kaiser. And so, by September 2021, by September of this year, the state would require that the Health Plan of San Joaquin submit a contracting strategy to show our plan for expanding our provider network to cover the additional counties. for expanding our provider network to cover the additional counties. And I would just highlight that one of the state's requirements, because we've done this before, is continuity of care. And so what continuity of care requires is that the health plan make every effort to contract with all the same providers that Medi-Cal beneficiaries in Calaveras County currently access, whether those providers are in the county or outside of the county. And so the purpose, of course, is to minimize any disruption to member care. And so the way we do this is we identify all of the providers, we prioritize them by volume, we prioritize them by hard-to-access specialty care, and then we work from that list. And so of course, Adventist Health in Sonora, Dignity, Mark Twain Medical Center in San Andreas, Sutter, Amador Hospital would be high on that list for the purpose of continuity of care. And then in late 2022, the state would start a full readiness review of the health plan of San Joaquin. So this is where the state would say, that's one thing to give us a strategy for developing the provider network. Now we want to see, we want to see the providers you actually were able to obtain contracts with. And we want to see that you not only can satisfy that continuity of care, but that you also meet all the network adequacy requirements. And so this is a condition, this would be a condition of our going live in January 2024. So the state has a pretty robust process around this, and that, and the health plan of San Joaquin has done this before. So if we go to the next slide. I guess the reasons we believe counties should move forward is that the health plan is providing maximum support on the letters of intent and other presentation materials. There is no financial obligation to counties. The health plan of San Joaquin funds all startup activities. That's as we go out and develop the provider network. We contract directly with the state. Our funding comes from the state. We don't, we do not receive any funding from counties. And I think as Laura indicated, failure to submit a letter of intent by the April 30 deadline really precludes a county from even exploring this option. And we believe that after counties submit the letter of intent by April 30, and before the state releases the RFP for the commercial plans in October, that would be, you know, those months of opportunity to continue to make sure we're all on the same page and that we're sort of addressing issues. And the way we view this is that what we would be doing here is giving your Medi-Cal beneficiaries an added choice. Today, their choice is commercial plan. What we would be giving them is choice between a public plan and a commercial plan. And, you know, experience shows that the majority of Medi-Cal beneficiaries choose the public plan. So in San Joaquin County, more than nine out of 10 members choose the health plan of San Joaquin over the competing commercial plan. I think that's because we operate with a low overhead, so that most of our revenue is going to providers. What that means is we end up with a larger provider network, or at least a provider network that's more readily available to our members. And so members choose that improved access. So again, in San Joaquin County, 91% of members choose the health plan of San Joaquin. In Stanislaus County, 80-plus percent of members choose the health plan of San Joaquin. If we go to the next slide. If we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So the letter of intent commits both the health plan of San Joaquin and the county, Calaveras, and must be co-signed by both of us. The state issued instructions for completing the letters of intent. The health plan of San Joaquin developed a template letter of intent based on the state's instructions, since probably seven out of 10 elements have to come from us anyways. The template specifies that the county chooses to join a local initiative plan, identified as the health plan of San Joaquin, in the two-plan model, where you have, again, the one commercial plan and the one public plan called the local initiative. And the template describes the reasons that counties are interested in shifting to a public plan, because this is what counties told us, including Calaveras, that the reason would be to improve access for Medi-Cal beneficiaries, and to have stronger collaboration between the county and the health plan. And so just that last part about the collaboration between the county and the health plan, that's something we, that's one of those things that is sort of a differentiating factor for us. We've had extensive collaboration with our counties related to COVID-19. So last summer, the health plan of San Joaquin launched a two-month outreach campaign that was complemented by San Joaquin County, and we paid for 27 billboards, for radio advertisements, for paid advertisements on social media, Facebook and Instagram, and for advertisements in print and newspapers. In just the last month, we have made available HPSJ personnel to help staff various vaccination clinics. We've done this with the county clinics, we've done it with private hospitals like Tenet, and we've done it with our community health centers. And to help address the equity issue, we've been identifying our members that fall in with whatever is the priority population at the time. So for example, we identified all of our members aged 65 and older. We prioritize them by risk, for those members that have diabetes, congestive heart failure. We worked with the public health officers to sort of help get those people to the front of the line wherever the vaccination clinics were happening. And then more recently, two weeks ago, we hosted an evening webinar for all community physicians to come together, and the public health officers from both counties addressed community physicians to let them know about vaccine safety, the vaccine availability, and soliciting their support, so we could continue to sort of broaden those parties that are willing to help administer the vaccine. If we go to the next slide. So the proposal is to share governance, shared governance of the health plan of San Joaquin. So the proposal includes adding seats to the health plan of San Joaquin governing commission, so there will be one seat for each county, that you, the supervisors, would, it could be a supervisor or someone that you appoint. And really, the purpose is for all the counties to sort of collaborate on a regional vision, to set strategy, priorities, to make decisions, that I think we all want the same thing, which is access, access for members, and that we all want there to be a voice. And it's not only a voice for your county, but it's a voice for the larger region. And so that's a little bit about the model, and I think at this point, I'll transition to Lizeth, who will give an overview of the health plan of San Joaquin. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. If we can move on to the next slide. Just a few benefits of joining and having a public plan as an option for your county. As Michael indicated, we are responsible to our local governance, so we do have a commission that we are accountable for, that we present on a monthly basis any updates and any direction that we need as a whole for our strategy. But this will also allow Calaveras, as Michael indicated, to have a seat in that commission. We do really work to having a balanced health outcomes and being cost-effective. As Michael indicated, we, 95, over 95 cents of every dollar is spent on medical care for our members. And so that really allows us to really broaden the provider network that we have available to our members, and also ensure that they're getting access to care close to their home as well as in a timely manner. So that is something that we strive for. And we do also partner with the community. Michael indicated our initiatives around COVID. We also have other initiatives that we work with. And one of the things that we do is we sponsor health career scholarship programs for both of our counties. And so that is a scholarship that we make available to high school students as well as college students who are going to be focused on having a career within healthcare. And our intent is really to bring those students back to our community. So we have students that are getting scholarships at Stanford and UC Davis. And so again, we want them to come back to the community and serve whatever profession they go into. And as part of that scholarship program, we also make mentors available. And so they have an opportunity to partner with a health plan employee to help kind of teach them what it is to have that real-world experience about what it is like to work in a healthcare industry. And so we do have that partnership opportunity for our students as well, which we're very proud of. And again, we do really recognize that when a public option is available, and this is not just for us, but best experience that individuals have experienced throughout the state, is when they are given the option between a public plan and a commercial plan, individuals overwhelmingly select the public plan. If we can move on to the next slide. We are a public agency. As I indicated, we are governed by our commission that is comprised of state, community stakeholders as well as healthcare leaders in our community. We are a nonprofit, and this allows us to really focus our efforts on having low overhead and ensuring that, again, the funds are being utilized in order to be able to support our provider partners. And we are focused on, we are a Medi-Cal plan, so this is what we do every day, is again, support the Medi-Cal population for both Stanislaus and San Joaquin County. If we can move on to the next slide. Thank you. Right now, for both counties, we are a two-plan model. We were established in 1995 for San Joaquin County, and a little later, we transitioned into Stanislaus County. This is back in 2013. I think that experience when we transitioned into Stanislaus County really gave us that opportunity to learn as far as what it was like to transition into that geographic area. And because the population mix is a little bit different for both counties, Stanislaus is a little bit more rural than San Joaquin, and so we had to reprioritize our strategy for our network in order to ensure that we partnered with rural health centers for that area. And so I think that this really allows us to, again, be nimble and be able to modify our strategy based on the needs of the community. And as a whole, I think we have seen that our market share has increased in certain parts as we've, again, been there a longer period of time. If we can move on to the next slide. A brief snapshot of what our membership looks like, is again, when new members become eligible for Medi-Cal, they have an option of either selecting us or our other commercial plan partner. And what we have found is that overwhelmingly, they will select the public plan. So for San Joaquin County, again, we've been, we had a presence here a little bit longer. We do see that over 91% of new members do select us. And for Stanislaus, it's a little over 81% of our members will select us versus our commercial partner. As a whole, our overall membership does, is over 360,000. And the population mix does vary, children and families, elderly, individuals with disabilities, members that have both Medicare and Medi-Cal. And so again, we do, we are familiar with certain relationships, because we have been in this space for many years. If we can go on to the next slide. As a whole, when we're looking at expansion, again, one of the things that we wanted to factor was a contiguous geographic presence, and so Calaveras being a neighboring county to us, it really just kind of makes sense for us to look at a partnership with Calaveras. Is that something that you want to do? And again, right now, you have approximately 10,000 Medi-Cal lives within your county. If we can move on to the next slide. While Calaveras County, again, when we're looking at the population that we serve, looking at our 2019 population needs assessment, we did find that 71% of our members identify with belonging to a racial or ethnic minority. There are language and cultural differences that we do need to consider, and so for us, we do have our members be part of our community and decision-making process. We have a community committee where we have our members participate, and so they give us feedback as far as what works for them, what doesn't. When we're having campaigns around health education, they provide us their voice in that process. And so we want to make sure that, again, we are opening that up and having that available to having it not only community-based organizations, but also member and provider input with our We do recognize that, especially in our two counties, we do typically rank lower in all categories, including health outcomes, quality of life, and health factors. But right now, we have had a lot of initiatives, a lot in improving provider access and ensuring that members are getting the preventive care. And we really do work with our provider partners. We have several initiatives in which we support the provider offices in order to make calls for members on their behalf, to encourage members to come in and get preventive care. And so we will really customize our provider and member experience based on the needs of each clinic to ensure that we're getting our members in to get the quality care that they need. And again, recognizing that, you know, COVID has definitely changed the way we get our healthcare needs met. We have seen that there has been an increase in telehealth benefits. And so we want to really expand that and offer e-consult option as well, in order to, again, have members not be impacted by where they live, in order to not get access to care. We want members to get access to care, and so that's been a platform that we've actually expanded as well, to, again, make sure that members have access. If we can move on to the next slide. Here's a brief little snapshot of what our provider network looks like. We have over 350 primary care providers. We do have over 710 contracted specialists, hospital contracts. As Michael indicated, we are contracted with the major, all the hospitals within our two counties as well as our surrounding counties, because again, even tertiary level of care, we don't have hospitals that offer that within our counties, but we look for hospitals outside of our counties to support that, members that need that care. Right now, we are contracted with Tenet, Kaiser, Dignity, Adventist, as well as Sutter. And then we're also contracted with all of the FQHCs and rural health centers of both counties. And so our intent would really be to expand that process in order to give ourselves ample time to be able to develop that network within your counties. And we've already started to identify who those providers, provider partners are that are currently seeing your residents within your counties. If we can move on to the next slide. And again, I mentioned a little bit about some of the provider partnerships that we have right now, which is making sure that we are providing that- have right now, which is making sure that we are providing that customization for providers to get care. So, again, making sure that we help them with making calls if needed. We also do outreach campaigns, mailers to members in order to be able to make sure that, again, members are accessing the care that they need. We've also have had several pilots that we have done with our FQHCs and rural health center partners in order to make sure that we're supporting them the way that we can and also sharing data. We also share data with them on a reaching basis, making sure that they are aware how many of their members need to get preventive care, like mammogram services, women's annual wellness exam, immunizations for the children, to make sure that they have that. And we also support them with providing them education tools and then also relevant trainings related to things that are happening right now. So we've done opioid management trainings. We had an opportunity for them to be certified through us, which is actually really well received within our provider community. And then also trainings related to the COVID vaccines distribution. If we can move on to the next slide? Opportunities that we have related to supporting our community, again, we definitely want to make sure that we're getting input from our members. We have the Community Advisory Committee. We also get input from providers. We regularly meet with them on a quarterly basis or joint operation meetings. We also have leadership meetings where members of our executive team as well as the hospitals' executive teams are meeting on a regular basis to make sure that we're discussing any issues that come up. You know, partnering with the county, with the counties on the vaccine distribution. We meet with them on a regular basis to make sure that we're, again, supporting them through their vaccine distributions as well as community-based organizations and the health plan associations throughout the state. So as far as next steps, again, looking at what we need to do was provide the letter of intent for your review and consideration. I know we were scheduled to present in today's meeting, but again, depending on next steps that you do decide to move forward with the disaffection to the HCS, to make sure that that is something that, again, if you want to move forward. So I think, I want to give you, thank you for giving us an opportunity to present today. And I'll stop to see if there's any questions.
Any follow-ups prior to that with either from Ms. Larson or Mr. Leach on this and how it applies to Calaveras County?
I would just add, this is a unique opportunity for us to explore another option for our Managed Healthcare Plan. And so really, it's just about going forward with having a conversation to see exactly how this could be done is what we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Larson. Board members, are there any questions? Mr. Gueramendi?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I actually have literally pages of questions on this one. This is something that's brought to us. It's obviously a big deal. We haven't heard of it before in front of this board, and we're being asked to do an LOI. I really appreciate the fact that we got another 30 days. At your discretion, Mr. Chair, I could start listing off my questions, but it's going to take a while. Or we could just punt, and I could take the next 30 days to ask the questions. It's really your call, Mr. Chair.
I really want to thank staff for moving forward with the extension because I think they're very well aware that we want to go over this information for much longer. I think, you know, I'll just get intent of the board right now. Will you be in favor, Ms. Calaway, of punting on the LOI? Yes? Mr. Toffnelli? Yes? Ms. Fulendorf? Yes. I think, you know, general questions right now would be a good thing. I don't think you need to go through your entire list. This will give us an opportunity to reach out to Ms. Larson and our other partners to gather more information as we proceed. And maybe we can, you know, I think we should probably bring this back in two segments, you know, prior to April 30th. With, you know, a first one presenting what the LOI is at that time. And then, you know, after our questions are asked, that'll give us another opportunity prior to April 30th to make any adjustments. I think it's going to be another couple-step process for us to do it correctly, if we're going to actually have our input as board members to it. With that, I will start with public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion, and we'll work from there.
Yes, we have Brianna Mierman with her hand raised.
Good morning. I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good morning, chair members. My name is Brianna Mierman. I am here to speak on behalf of California Health and Wellness. I am with Centene. We are part of the family of companies that serves and works with California Health and Wellness in Calaveras County as a Medicare managed care plan. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll just, I'll be very brief because I know, I know this has been a long item, and it's a very complicated issue and certainly not one that we can dive deeply into here today. But just quickly, California Health and Wellness, we have been serving Calaveras and the surrounding counties for about seven years now as the Medicare plan, similarly to the Health Plan of San Joaquin, serves San Joaquin and St. Anacostas counties. We cover about 5,000 patients in the community and, of course, more in the surrounding communities. And I think, you know, seeking the extension on the LOI is pretty, is critical because this is a very, very complicated issue and there are lots of questions. The LOI process is a very good opportunity for a health plan of San Joaquin, but I think it's an opportunity also to consider more fully that there are other options available and also the option of continuing to build on what you've developed over the past seven years rather than starting over with a new regional approach or a new regional plan. So I would just offer that this next 30 days will be a really important time for us to all keep talking to each other about what you have today and why it may continue to serve you well. And really appreciate the opportunity to talk today before you and also continuing the conversation with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No further public comment.
Thank you very much. I think at this time, we can get general direction from the board. Instead of using this as the action item, we can set it to put our plan together. I think it's a good suggestion for us to move it forward in two parts prior to April 30th. That way, we can get our input, questions answered, and then make any adjustments to the letter of intent so that it truly reflects what Calaveras is intending on moving forward. Are we in agreement as a board right now? I don't think we need a motion for this or anything. Unless there's anything further from staff or our partners, we'll move forward in that direction unless there's any comments by any other board members. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Larson.
I was just going to say that I really appreciate a dialogue. We by no means want to move forward with a plan that really is not going to meet the needs of our county and our citizens. And so this will absolutely be a collaborative process. And if at the end of the day, if it turns out that the health plan of San Joaquin County doesn't meet our needs and the current, our current plan does, then that's the decision I think that we'll all come to consensus with. But we certainly are open to additional collaboration. So thank you for allowing that.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate the work going forward, you know. I just think we all need to wrap our heads around this. Mr. Toffnelli, was there anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, just some general questions. And I too have a bunch of questions that I'll hold off on during the course of the next month. But just to clarify, we're asking to sign this letter of intent that would then basically tie us to what you presented to us, more or less a JPA, which we would have a seat at the board, the upper board. And then RFPs will go out. And we'll be tied to that contract, to those RFPs, forever, whatever the length of time that contract is, be it five years, 10 years, whatever it is. And we won't have the ability to just, if we don't like the model, to pull out. We can't just say, wow, we don't like this, it's not working for us. The numbers that were presented to us, we have 10,000 Medicare patients within Calaveras County. It's not actually working to them. It worked better, and they're used to the previous model. We will not have the ability to just pull out. Is that correct?
Once this, I think you, once this goes live, that's right. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But it's important to note that we, you know, there's a vetting process that happens between now and, Michael, what's the date? So the letter of intent really isn't binding us to that. If Health Plan of San Joaquin can't meet the demands that are made in the back and forth between now and, is it early October?
So I think that what you're stating with the letter of intent is that you have a firm intention to switch to this, in our case, the two-plan model and to partner with the Health Plan of San Joaquin. That that's your firm intention. But if between now and before the RFP is released, that it became obvious, gosh, this just isn't going to work. We've had a lot of discussion with providers, with member advocates, then I think there would be opportunity to sort of pull out. The state wouldn't like that, that depending on, you know, how late in the game you did that. And the state, and that would certainly need to happen before the RFP is released because I think once the RFP is released, we're all committed, I would say, would be my estimate.
Thank you. Mr. Gueramendi?
Just to follow up on Supervisor Toffnelli's point. So if I understand this correctly, by signing a letter of intent, you don't have to compete in the RFP process like the private companies do, correct?
That's right. So it would be HBSJ and there would be an RFP for one commercial plan.
So we would be basically assume, thank you, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Calaway, any further questions?
Like my colleagues, I have several. Should we focus all of our questions to Ms. Larson?
I think that would be the proper filter, and then she can delegate those to whoever needs to provide the answers according to what they are. I think that's a good, good place to go. Ms. Larson, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. Ms., is there anything further, Ms. Calaway?
No.
Okay. Ms. Fulendorf? I think with that, we'll go ahead and move on to item 24. And thank you all for your time today and your presentation. And I do really want to thank staff for the 30-day extension so that we can thoroughly vet this and make the proper decision as the board is. We appreciate that work.
Chair, can I just ask one point of clarification for my purposes? Because what I've heard is that you want me to agendize items on both the April 13th and the April 27th. So I just want to be clear for my purposes, is that a further discussion item for April 13th, followed by a discussion and possible action item on the 27th?
I think that's the best way for us to proceed to thoroughly vet this and make, come to a good decision as the board. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and give it one more five-minute, oh, Ms. Calaway, was there anything further? No? Okay. I'm going to give it one more five-minute break prior to public works, starting with their item number 24. That way, we can be prepared, any sharing slides and everything can be ready to go. Are we back live, Ms. Simpson?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 24, Public Works. Conduct a public hearing for the consideration of vacating public access Telegraph Road and Telegraph Court in Calaveras County and adopt a resolution vacating Telegraph Road and Telegraph Court. Do I need to close the public meeting yet, or is that later? Right, I'm opening the public hearing now. I just want to make sure I'm going through the right process here. Okay. We're opening the public hearing now. Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa and Board of Supervisors. This item is for the vacation. What was that? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I was just saying, good to see you, Mr. Pottenger.
Okay, so this item is for the vacation of Telegraph Road and Telegraph Court. These roads are at the very west end of the county off of State Route 4. The vacation action follows the procedures and is consistent with Streets and Highways Code, Section 8320, et cetera. So to make kind of a long story short, a vacation action of a public road only affects the public's right to the road. The private rights along that road are not affected. So what is currently happening is that there's a lot of trash, vandalism occurring at this, along this road, and the property owners wish to put a gate up to prevent all that from happening way out there on the western end of the county. The applicant, the Bora family, submitted an application last year for the vacation of this road. And during the year, we work with the Bora family so that they can reach out to all of the property owners that are along this road. There are approximately 41 properties along the road that are affected. Of those five belong to the Bora families. So there's 36 other families, ranchers, that were approached, and they have responded pretty much favorably to the concept of the vacation of the road. Now, since that time, there's been some questions that we've received. The supervisor, Supervisor Fulendorf, has been approached. We've been approached. We have about four emails with questions regarding the private component of the easement of those two roads. Now, the thing is that the county has no authority to grant private easements. That's going to have to be something that's worked out amongst the different ranchers and the families. So at this point, given that there may be an opportunity for the families to work out some private easement arrangements along Telegraph Road and Telegraph Court, we recommend that the public hearing goes forth. The public hearing was advertised, it's been in the papers, there's been these posters placed along the road. Once that's done, once the public hearing, we receive the input from the public and we close the public hearing, we recommend at this time, no action be taken so that the families can work out their private easement concerns. And then we'll come back to the board at a later date for a final action, either approving or denying the request for the vacation of Telegraph Road and Telegraph Court. So at this point, I turn it back to you, Chair. So at this point, I turn it back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pakenger. We appreciate the recommendation, you know, being thoughtful for the constituents that access that road. Ms. Folendorf, is there anything you would like to speak to on this piece as we move forward?
No, I think at this point, just allowing the constituent to speak up to all the board members, so everyone can hear where I have been getting phone calls, so you guys can understand the concern that they have.
Thank you, Ms. Folendorf. Any other board comments before we give the opportunity for public comment? With that, Ms. Simpson. We'll give it, if no one's got their hand raised yet, we'll give it a moment for them to raise their hands.
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay. You know, I had also seen, or not everything, but quite a bit of what Ms. Folendorf's seen on comments. So I also appreciate the recommendation for us to hold off while the easement concerns are addressed by the people that use and own property near Telegraph Road. Is there any comments from the boards to that effect? Are we in agreement that we'll postpone until Mr. Pakenger brings it back? Mr. Gueramendi? Ms., yes? Mr. Toffnelli?
Whatever Supervisor Folendorf, it's her district, she's agreement to that, I'm fine.
Yeah, no, I like Mr. Pakenger's recommendation. We spoke last week on what other alternative they ought to give more time to the constituents or the property owners.
Thank you, Ms. Folendorf. With that, I don't believe I have to close the public hearing, and we'll take it back before us here soon, Mr. Pakenger. Thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
I would, I'm sorry to interrupt. I actually would recommend that you close the public hearing at this time. It'll be brought back as a separate item at a subsequent date.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing, and it'll be brought back at a subsequent date.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to supervisor announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency, and may make other announcements or report out. Supervisor Gueramendi? Supervisor Callaway? Supervisor Toffnelli?
I do have something. March is Women in History Month, and we have a lot of women in Calaveras County history. And I want to thank all of them, including the ones we have present, for their contribution to Calaveras County. But we have one that I want to pay tribute to for her history, that is here in the boardroom with us today. Rita Callaway. 1992, there was a recall election in District 3, and Marita won that election. And she served from '93 to '94 for the rest of that term. And then from '94 to 2014, for five consecutive elections, she won. That's very difficult to do. That was 22 straight years. Only one other supervisor in Calaveras history had longer, which was Tom Tryon, he had 28. During that time, she spent on the board. By the way, there's only one other woman in California that has a longer history, and Marita was neck and neck with her until 2014, and that's Jacobs, Ms. Jacobs in San Diego County. And she's going on to, I think, her 30th year this year. But Marita, at the time in 2014, her and her were pretty much neck and neck for the longest serving. But there are some women in history that Marita sat on this board with during that time. Terry Bailey, Victoria Erickson, and a woman in herself that has plenty of history in Calaveras County, Lucy Thine, who had two terms, and Debbie Ponte, and now we have Ms. Folendorf here with us. And during that period of time, Marita coined the phrase "trauma drama," and she served in many times, many trauma dramas over that time. So I just want to pay tribute to her and all the other women in the county that served Calaveras County for their history in this great county, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. Ms. Folendorf? I also have nothing at this time. With this, we'll be moving into closed session item. Once the board clerk reads the closed session item, we will be adjourning the meeting today, and we will be reporting out on the closed session item, or closed session item agenda during the next regular board meeting.
Closed session item for today, item 25, Conference Legal Counsel Re-A anticipated Litigation, One Case, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. One moment.